Test, test.
Everybody in a... We'll be starting just a minute or two late while we wait for everyone to settle in. I'll give you two minutes, how's that? And no bunny ears during the photo ops, okay? All of you who are under 12 years old should know that when I do this, we're gonna start the meeting, at which point you wrap it up, which is fine. I got to know some of these young people before we started and I'm looking forward to hearing more about them. Everybody, friends, welcome to our call to order, the, what is the date? January 30th Board of Education meeting. We are going to stand, please, as you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee or treasurer Brad Gerby.
Help me, okay? I pledge allegiance to the love of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think we have new leaders.
Yeah, yeah. Right? I was gonna say, that was the best one ever, let's do it again. At this point in the evening, we have a few bits and pieces of information. This is the superintendent's recognition section. But first, we have two special guests I'd like to bring up to the front. I'd like to introduce to the community Ryan Kerr, our DEI specialist, come on up Ryan, there he is, and instructional coach, so Ryan, come on up, we're happy to meet you and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, thank you, it's great to be here. Word says push, hi, can you hear me? That's great. Hi, everybody. Hi, community. Thank you, it's great to be here, I'm very excited about this. I'm Ryan Kerr, I am the new DEI specialist here for Celine Area Schools. I am thrilled to be able to call myself that. For the last 17 years, I have been teaching English and theater in schools around the country, starting outside Milwaukee, Wisconsin, as far flung as Austin, Texas, and most recently in central Illinois. It's been a wonderful career and I'm utterly thrilled to start taking this next step in the process. I'll keep my comments brief because I know we have some real all-stars here that we really want to hear from. But I will just say that I have been in all the schools in this district and have just been utterly impressed with the caliber of student, the caliber of teacher and administrator at every level. You all deserve a real tip of the hat for the work that you have been doing academically and the work that you have been doing to prepare for further work that I hope to have a, play a part in, so congratulations to you and thank you for having me, it's really wonderful to be here.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have one other new hire and she's standing up right now and heading to the front. It's Principal Kim Jasper at the Celine Middle School.
Okay, it's much more green now. I'm really excited to be here at Celine Area Schools, particularly at Celine Middle School. As an alum of Celine Schools, walking through Celine Middle School is my own old high school and that's quite an interesting nostalgic experience every single day. I come with a background full of middle school. I've spent 15 years at Myla Middle School, most recently, as their principal. I taught 7th and 8th grade, English, Spanish, some business classes, really dug into EDPs over the years and was the assistant principal for two years and then the principal. The community at Celine Middle School has been amazingly welcoming, the kids, I mean, the kids are awesome. They're kind, they're caring, and they are excelling in everything that they seek to do. So I'm already really impressed with them and with the staff. So I'm thrilled to be here, I'm gonna keep it brief, but thank you and congratulations to all of you. Go Hornets, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, welcome, welcome. Dr. Lott is gonna take it from here.
Okay, as some of you know, January is National School Board Recognition Month and I want to read some comments about our excellent board. "This is a time to recognize the individuals who approach their volunteer work life like it's a full-time job and with extraordinary dedication to public schools and the Celine Area Schools. School boards are charged with making decisions that can sometimes be quite difficult or require sifting through a great deal of information. They contribute hundreds of hours each year leading Celine Area Schools. Collectively, school board members across this state spend more than 7,500 hours on professional development to keep well-informed of the latest trends in educational leadership, are deeply involved in community activities, and spend many hours at extracurricular events. This board in particular has certainly done a tremendous job in seeking out opportunities to support their own professional development and I would argue have logged a disproportionate number of PD hours in comparison to other school boards in the state and we're very proud of that." The community members serving on Celine Area School Boards of Education in their completed years of service are Tim Austin, who can't be here tonight because he's plowing snow and it's one of our few stories, we gotta make sure we're keeping everything clean. And seven years of service for Tim. Brad Gerby with three years of service. Lauren Gold in her first year. Susan Eastup with three years. Michael McVeigh with seven. Jenny Miller with three and Jennifer... Oh, okay, five, sorry. Five, what do I...
Almost right. And Jennifer Stebbin with five.
Jennifer Stebbin with five, thank you, correct that. So on behalf of SAS, thank you so much for all you do to contribute to the success of our student, staff, and community that support the Celine Area Schools. And so we have a token of our appreciation with a gift and again, we appreciate you, so wonderful work. Okay, I'll do the next one.
It's your call if you want to wear that throughout the meeting, you also get... Make it a bit toasty.
Go right ahead. Okay, next, we have a very special recognition and all of you are here for that, which is great. So we're gonna be talking about the incredible Heritage and Celine Middle School robotics teams here. Let's start with FLL, the First Lego League. The Heritage Robotics Program grew to four teams this year, welcoming the mighty RoboHive team to the family. It also increased the number of mentors from five to 12. Each team truly represented Celine Area Schools and competitions all over southeast Michigan. The RoboHive team entered their rookie season with an amazing robot and placed an excellent sixth place in the robot game at their regional competition. The RoboSting team earned the number one core values award at their regional competition for their outstanding display of values like teamwork, innovation, and inclusion. The RoboHornets earned an invite to the state championship and the number one robot design award at the regional competition, meaning they had the best overall robot design engineering process. The RoboSwarm team earned an invite to the state championship hosted in Celine on December 16th, where they both earned the number one robot performance award and the top score and the number one champions award, winning the overall event. From a starting field of over 38,000 teams with over 280,000 competitors, RoboSwarm advances to the First World Festival in April with 147 other teams from around the globe. And now we want to talk about FTC, the First Tech Challenge. The SNS Robotics ran three teams for the second year in a row due to sustained and increased interest. Each team designed, built, and competed with a completely unique robot this year, a testament to the strength of the program. The season started strong with the CyBugs earning an early invitation to the state championship with an excellent performance at an early qualifying tournament. At the next regional tournament in Bedford, all three Celine teams competed. Celine finished 1, 2, 3 out of 36 teams with a 15-0 record, resulting in a Celine versus Celine showdown. Swarm's Alliance battled the CyBugs and Hornet Hackers in tense matches in which the CyBugs and Hornet Hackers ended up in first place, with Swarm as the captain of the second-place alliance. At our Michigan South Central Robotics League Tournament, all three teams made it into the playoffs. This time around, the CyBugs and Swarm took home the winning alliance trophy, becoming league champions. All three teams earned invitations to one of two regional state championships. Team Swarm, with their alliance, won both their division and the overall southeast Michigan championship. One week later, the CyBugs similarly won both their division and overall northwest Michigan championship. As a result, the CyBugs earned a world championship invitation taking place in Houston, Texas in April, with Swarm being next in line to receive an invitation should a spot open up. It's possible that together with Celine's RoboSwarm Elementary Team and FLL and FTC programs against 360,000 worldwide competitors, three Celine teams could attend the world championship in the same year. Even more additional highlights, if that wasn't enough. Celine teams currently hold four of the top 10 records worldwide with over 4,700 active teams and more than 8,200 matches played. The CyBugs are currently ranked the world's strongest team. Celine was featured in various FTC-focused YouTube channels as well as local newspapers. In addition to the event victories between the teams, Celine earned nine additional awards, Design Think Innovation and the prestigious Inspire Award. And this just in, Celine was featured on the first Updates Now FTC Top 25 by popular vote amongst worldwide teams, with Team Swarm 15-5-5-5 and CyBugs 10-6-44, were both featured, with Swarm at number 16 and CyBugs at number four in the world. And now we're gonna check out some really cool highlights if Mr. Goodman's gonna queue up a great video that you've all put together. Let's check it out.
The design award goes to Team 10-6-44, the final of our South Central League Tournament. The captain, 10-6-44, the Hornet Hackers.
Alright, taking up the 16th slot is Swarm from Celine, Michigan. This robot has an innovative scoring mechanism that allows them to place pixels precisely to optimize their chances of mosaics. They also have a very fast climb and a consistent autonomous that allowed them to end up as part of the winning alliance at the South Michigan FTC Championship.
Actually, Team Michigan, there's just one of those super, super tough areas to advance from and Swarm definitely had a really good robot this year. Yeah, Jessica, what are your thoughts?
I mean, yeah, Michigan has always been a really impressive region in terms of FTC just because they are like super young kids who are competing. It's like a middle school region, I think. So all the robots that are on the top 25 here for Michigan are like completely 100% deserved.
Coming in at fourth is 10-6-44, CyBugs from Celine, Michigan. With an OPR of 158.5 and setting a Michigan high score of 304, they have been a consistent force in Michigan with an innovative arm and treading claw that allows them to have amazing precision over where they are placing on the backdrop. In Endgame, their drone climb has been super consistent and I'm curious to see what teams take inspiration from them in the future. In CyBugs' future, they'll be competing at Worlds and I'm super excited to see how they improve their robot.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I was thinking. They were number one OPR for so long, I honestly wouldn't be surprised if they make it to elim... Just, how are they, division elim? Elims?
Eight.
Yeah, I won't be...
Okay, very, very excellent. So this really is incredible. And with that said, we're so excited to be currently working on the new steam centers at both Celine Middle School and Celine High School, so that as these kids progress, we'll have appropriate spaces for students to really excel in this area because we want to demonstrate our appreciation of all the support that's happening from parents, both volunteers and just participants and then clearly our students. And we want to make sure they have a first world-class place to continue with this incredible work. Okay, so the next part is trying to determine how we're gonna get all these teams up to the front and take pictures and so here's how we're gonna orchestrate this. Mr. Myers is gonna start by organizing the four teams from Heritage. We'll just go one team at a time, where they're gonna come across and coaches and volunteers that are involved with the teams will come up to the podium, state their name and their grade level or their role and then after that's done, that team will take a picture behind the appropriate table, whether you're in the Heritage team or the middle school teams. And then we're gonna want the Board of Education also to stand up and go behind the tables with the students and coaches. And then our Executive Director of Communications, Jackie Martin's gonna come behind the desks here and take pictures and Tran, if you want to do that too. And then we'll make sure we're posting them to where parents can have access to them, okay? Alright, so Mr. Myers, why don't we just start with, you call off whatever Heritage team you want up first and then we make sure that green light's on there at the podium and we go from there.
Alright, first can we get the RoboHive? Come on up, why don't you guys introduce yourselves?
Do I have to speak in the microphone?
Yes, you do. So the people at home can hear you.
Hello, my name is Max.
My name is Sammy, I'm in 5th grade and I'm the ambassador of fun.
My name's Eric Ensley, I was an assistant coach.
Okay, and now let's have that team move to the back of the space and then Mr. Myers, the next Heritage team.
Next up are the RoboHornets, come on up, RoboHornets.
I am Kai Bude in 5th grade.
I am Quinn Schrader and I'm also in 5th grade.
I'm Ishan Dos and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Jeremy Schrader, I'm 37 years old and I'm the very proud coach of these kids. Okay, and now we're gonna be going with the third Heritage team that Mr. Myers will call up.
Alright, let's bring up RoboSting.
I'm Franklin and I'm in 5th grade.
Hi, my name is Shadi Aldeeb and I'm in 5th grade.
Hello, I'm Coach Walid and it's so wonderful to see these kids grow up and do all this.
Alright, and last but not least, RoboSwarm, why don't you come on up here?
Hi, my name is Sudania and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Abby and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Lily and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Jake and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm, I'm Phillip and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Harrison and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Coach Nick and I love watching these kids and it's very rewarding. So thank you all and thank you to Coach Chris over here, he's the best.
I'm Chris Myers and I'm just grateful for all the support from Celine Area Schools and of course, all the parents and my wonderful mentors like Nick here. Couldn't do it without him, so thank you.
Go RoboSwarm!
Alright, come on up Swarm, 1-5-5-5-5, 5-5-5-5-5.
I'm Caroline D'Agostino and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Danaya and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Leila and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Andre, my name is Andre and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Gwen and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Sid and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Mayur and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Vivian Kutcher and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Coach Patel. I'm in middle school for nine years.
Chris Myers again, Coach of 15555. I also would like to give a shout out while I've got the microphone to my other wonderful Robo-Swarm coach, Erin Atkinson, who couldn't be here tonight, but he's also very grateful for all your support.
I'm Suhas and I'm Assistant Coach.
Next up, 10645, the Hornet Hackers.
Hello, my name is, my name is Avon McLaughlin and I am in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Levi and I'm in seventh grade.
Hello, my name is Zach and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Luke and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name's Grant and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Vias and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Aiden and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Fade and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Felix and I'm in seventh grade.
Hi, my name's Kavneral. I'm in eighth grade.
And I'm Coach Lance.
I'm Coach F. I celebrated my 20-year high school reunion two years ago, so I'll let the kids do the math on that.
Hi, I'm Coach Ian. This is my first year involved in robotics and it's been a pleasure to work with everyone involved.
My name is Raoul Hola. I'm one of the coaches and first year as well. It's been wonderful working with everyone and I wish I can be in seventh grade again.
Do we, do you have, is this okay this far out? All right, very excited to pull up 10644, the CyBugs.
Hi, I'm Zach. I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Jackson Jo-
I'm Zach. I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Jackson. I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Ian and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Victor Loels and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Donovan and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Logan and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Vadim and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Graham and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Gavin. I'm Gavin and I am in sixth grade.
I'm Drew and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Ivan and I'm in, and I'm, I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Max and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Dan and I'm happy to be one of the coaches.
Coach Kevin and I love this team.
Coach Paul and I'm just happy to be here.
They already know how to do it.
Ooh, I want to be right next to you. All right, here we go. So again, on behalf of the Celine Area Schools, students, parents, volunteers, coaches, thank you so much for arguably the best robotics teams in the state of Michigan and potentially the world. Thanks very much, everyone. Have a great night. Yeah. And everybody, it's not rude to leave. If you want to stay for the meeting, you certainly can, but we really appreciate all of you and your time too. Do you want us to help with this? We can, you got it? Okay. All right, yeah, let's take a second to allow them to- Emily Sickler, you're on standby. She's got her own- No, she's actually just normal. Just a, just a quick note to those of us who are left behind here. I heard them say Celine a few times, but after this time next year, they're going to know how to pronounce it right, right? All right. This is the public comment section. A member of the public may address the board for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting is limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into account, and I'm looking at you, Principal Sickler, take into account considerations of the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. We have one lined up this evening and it is Emily Sickler?
Well, hello, I'm Emily Sickler. I am the principal of Harvest Elementary School, but I am here speaking on behalf of the Celine Area Schools Administrators Association and just here to say thank you on behalf of the administration. Actually, hats off to you. You might notice that there's a little gift for all of you. Don't put it on if you don't love it because they're from the Edge. And if it's not, if it doesn't fit you perfectly, feel free to exchange it. But if it is a great fit for you, just put it on. But if it's not a great fit, then you can go ahead and exchange that. But we do want to say thank you. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're all about just uniqueness and saying thank you, hats off to you, because we see how much that you do for all of us as administrators and all the work that you do to make sure that our schools, our students, and all the things that you do. So you sit here and do all of that work, but also behind the scenes, you come to our buildings, you see our students, you see us, and that just really means a lot. So thank you today, thank you this month, and thank you just in, you know, all the work that you do. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Principal Sickler. I appreciate that. I think I'm going to have to keep mine on too, Brett. I, no. We have two extended public comments this evening. The first is Megan DeGrand, who will introduce herself, discussing Heritage Schools' Points of Pride, followed by, and who? Oh, and Cameron Cochran made it. Oh, good.
I brought my sidekick with me. I'm Megan DeGrand. I'm the very proud principal of Heritage School.
And I am Cameron Cochran, Assistant Principal at Heritage.
Thank you for having us and rescheduling us for today from last week. We began by listing this giant list of all these things that are going really great at Heritage, and then we thought, well, how could we make this more fun? So then we took a snow day and we decided to put it to rhyme. So we have a poem of all of our highlights that we are going to recite, recite for you here, and it's called "It's Happening at Heritage." Goes like this. "We opened our doors on August 28th, ready to soar and fly out the gate. We began teaching our tenants to be at our best, putting respect, responsibility, and kindness to test. Every day begins with morning meetings to start, with fourth and fifth graders tired but ready to take part. To lay the day's foundation for teaching and learning, to build connections and fuel the empathy burn stirring. Our SEL team has expanded in size. Lessons and learning for class visits on rise. Tier one, two, and three, we are ready for you to support you in all of the things that you do. Family game night was on the Heritage front lawn, and then two nights of Fall Fest until daylight had gone. These were for fun and to celebrate our team, where school spirit and community ties began to stream. Once our student leadership representatives were set, they quickly became eager for challenges yet. Twenty-four students, one for each fourth and fifth grade class, to lead our school efforts, efforts and community meetings at mass. After-school clubs, we've got one for you. Quiz Bowl for knowledge and Uno Draw Two. And if you're interested in joining the fun, Mondays and Thursdays are when the clubs run. From Girl Scouts Robotics and Science Olympiad, extracurriculars here are really quite rad. Homework Hive, Cheer Abilities, and Rec Basketball. There's after-school fun for one and all. Star is underway for students to see the value of uniqueness and inclusivity. We meet bi-weekly for students to share, students talking and relating with lessons to pair.
With one full trimester under our belts, we're in to try two with new knowledge felt. In December, we hosted a writing coaching institute where the skill shared with visitors was absolute. Life skills are important to one and all, and the credit union and snack carts fill our halls. From students exchanging goods for dollar bills, we teach about money and practical skills. And on the horizon, another tradition to boot, an inclusive basketball game, we're ready to shoot. Dribbling and shooting, ready or not, our Hornets will meet the Dexter Dreadnoughts. So we've started the year with learning and fun, but rest assured, there is much more to be done. NWA Round Two kicked off last Monday with more learning targets and lessons on the way. Learning expos and class plays will help us to show exactly what concepts and skills that we know. Our brains will be flowing with every fact and figure, but ready for more and ready to go bigger. Come May, we'll take the fun outside. At fifth grade camp down the zip line, we'll glide. Field day events in the sun at Crabtree, end of year celebrations are filled with glee. It's our students and teachers at the heart of it all, and seeing kids happy answers our call. It's great to be a part of the Heritage Swarm, even though challenges, even through challenges, our hearts remain warm.
Yes, so it's, it's happening at Heritage and we are lucky to be a part of it all.
Well done. Thank you very much. Nothing but net.
March 4th.
Chat GPT could help.
You're right. Oh, well, good evening. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak to you guys. I'm Stacy Rumse, the Executive Director for the Foundation for Celine Area Schools. Just want to give you kind of a quick update as to what's been going on. Back in November, the Board of Trustees approved $90,000 in grant funding. That included 20 grants that the Board of Trustees approved, and so we have $20,000 left to spend. So we'll be opening up the grant window again in the next month or so so that we can finish out those funds. Just to give you a quick sample of some of the grants, fourth graders are going to be participating in Arub Goldberg Design Competition in May. So we were able to help provide some, or give the funds to, for them to get tools for that competition. The middle school music department will be getting electric pianos and will end up benefiting 17,000 students from the project's lifespan. Physics and astronomy classes at the high school will utilize student manipulatives, including lasers, resonance, resonance tools, and equipment to analyze sight and sound quantitatively. So that's what we have going on with our grant funding. Next thing that we have coming up is the School and Family Partnership Series that we're doing, that the foundation is doing jointly with the district. We invite you to an engaging and informative evening with the New York Times bestseller, Julie, Dr. Julie Lithcott-Hames and her book, How to Raise an Adult. Julie will lead a thought-provoking talk, offering practical strategies that underline the importance of allowing children to make their own mistakes and develop the resilience and resourcefulness which are so necessary for healthy, to become healthy and thriving adults. And this is a free event being held this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Celine Middle School. There will be a Q&amp;A session following the discussion and a book signing immediately following the event. The next thing we have coming up, I'd like to invite you to our upcoming fundraiser, Blue Jeans and Bling, that is scheduled for Saturday, March the 9th. It will be held at the Sheraton Hotel. From 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM, there will be a dinner, a silent auction, a live auction, and some live music. The money raised from this event goes again towards grants for teachers, students, and staff and administration. And our very own, I don't think, no, she's still here. I don't think she's here anymore. Emily Sickler from the Harvest and her mother, Kimberly Van Hope, will be our emcees for the evening. And we also have Mathias Donat from the Braun and Hallmer Auction Group. The next thing that we have going on is Foundation for Celine Area Schools Hall of Fame 2024. Nominations are now open through February 20th to nominate someone who exemplifies what it means to be a Celine Hornet. Eligibility must be one or more of the following: a Celine High School graduate of five years or more, a former faculty, staff member, coach, or administrator, and an individual who has made exceptional contributions to the Celine Area Schools community. So for more information, please visit our website at www.supportfsas.org. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Thank you very much, Stacy.
I forgot to mention, too, on behalf of the Foundation, we thank you guys for all that you do for the students, the staff, and the Celine community, and please enjoy this gift on behalf of the Board of Trustees for the Foundation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very, very, very much. I'm looking forward to Thursday evening. So I have no response to previous public comment. Number six, revisions, approval of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and the order can be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. Agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Stebbin.
Second, support, Jenny.
Okay, the two Js, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Great.
Oh, six, zero, great. I know, I know, okay. I'd like to introduce our student representatives, who are going to introduce some special guests.
Yeah, now, now we have Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA here.
They'll be talking about their club and recent achievements, so come on up.
Thank you, School Board, Dr. Latch, and our high school for your support. We are FCCLA. I'm Amber, and I'm the president.
I'm Caitlin, and I'm the Community Service Chair.
I'm Delaney, and I'm the Social Media Manager.
I'm Caleb, and I'm the Secretary.
And tonight, we just wanted to help raise awareness of this amazing opportunity for Celine High School students.
So what is FCCLA? FCCLA is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. It is a national career and technical student organization for students in family and consumer science that offers inter-curricular resources and support opportunities.
Since 1945, FCCLA members have been making a difference in their families, careers, and communities by addressing important personal, work, and societal issues through family and consumer sciences.
So that was FCCLA as a whole, but on a smaller scale with here, our Celine chapter. During meetings, we like to go over future and previous events, so we'll talk about events that just happened, as well as prepare for and plan events that we're expecting. We like to brainstorm volunteering and fundraising ideas, and then a fan favorite is we do a lot of fun team and leadership-building activities. And then outside of meetings, we'll hearing and fundraising events, as well as we all work on projects for states and nationals.
Example of a fundraiser. We collaborated with DECA on a fundraiser for Celine Area Social Services. This was called Leaves for Love. Students and staff could buy a leaf and put it on the tree to show their support. This is an event that me and another person, part of the club, ran. Through this, we were able to raise over, or a little under, $100.
An upcoming event that we're working on right now is Senior Center Trivia Night. All the money that we collect will go directly to the senior center. Teens and seniors will set, will team up to direct, to create bonds between seniors and our generation. We will work with the community to secure prizes for our first and second place winners, and pizza, pop, and dessert will be provided. This activity is gonna be a ton of fun and a great opportunity for both students and the senior center. Competing is also a huge part of our club, so students will pick a desired star event topic, and this is usually done with one to two other students. And projects consist of a written portion and a visual, so that's our visual that we used last year to compete at states and nationals. And at states, students will compete in front of judges and receive a score based on the rubric.
Me and Katie competed in nutrition and wellness at Level Two last year, and this is an example of the rubric that we worked with. Although we both joined late last year and didn't start our star project until January, we were still able to finish before states in March. After states, we qualified and moved on to nationals, and we took advantage of the time in between the two events to critique and perfect our project.
So one of my favorite parts of our club are the travel opportunities that are made available to us. Two years ago, I was lucky enough to qualify for and compete at nationals, which was in San Diego. It was a really great opportunity to just network and connect with chapters and members from all around the country, as well as, there's a lot of time to just see the city and really take in the sights.
Last summer, Delaney and I competed at nationals in Denver, Colorado, and we had a ton of fun exploring the city and creating bonds with other students that are part of FCCLA.
Though nationals is the goal and biggest event of FCCLA, there are many smaller opportunities as well. For example, this past fall, our chapter attended the Fall Leadership Conference at Western Michigan University. We also went to states in Grand Rapids in the spring of 2023.
And then lastly, just some future goals looking forwards for our club. So we really, our main goal is to be, just grow the chapter, we want to boost membership, increase some community involvement, and we're also working on star projects. So states is coming up really soon. I'm doing a project with Promote and Publicize. Katie and Delaney are doing a sports nutrition project, and we also have someone in our club who's doing the cupcake battle, which is interesting. We talked about fundraisers a little bit, but a big one that we're looking forward to, we're planning to work with the local florist and make and sell corsages for prom for fundraising. And we would also like to have some FCS community speakers come in and talk to our club in FCS classes. And we also would be really interested in doing more family career, family consumer science career investigations, so.
Thank you again, School Board members, Dr. Latch, our principals, Ms. Steger, Ms. Danine, and Mr. Rafco, as well as our community. We appreciate your support.
Well, thank you. Don't go too far. Thank you very much. If there are any questions, there might be one or two questions from our board members. I see you have some cups.
We were planning on giving this to you guys as a thank you. Yeah.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Well, where's nationals?
Washington.
I think I have.
Seattle.
Awesome.
Do any board members have any pressing questions to ask the FCCLA reps?
Jennifer Stebbin?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for presenting tonight, because I was not aware of this club, and I saw a lot of things in there that were really, really interesting. So I want to learn more about that trivia night with the seniors. Multigenerational activities are so important, and yeah, working with a local florist for prom, I really liked that. So I like all of these leadership opportunities, and I hope that this or social media, one of you was the social media expert, hopefully you can have a lot of others join your organization. So very nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miller?
I just wondered if you can tell us, I know some of you are not quite there yet, but any future plans that you have that might include some of the work that you're doing in FCCLA, like beyond high school?
So our club focuses a lot on like FCS careers. So like, a lot of the classes at the high school can like correspond with projects in the club. So one that I took was nutrition and wellness, and so we created our project on nutrition and wellness. So we, I learned a lot, like, and Delaney did too, about this, like, topic, and I think that I plan to go into nursing, so I think that having this background knowledge can really help me in the future.
And even not going into family consumer sciences, it's just a really great leadership opportunity, and I think it prepares you really well for future plans.
I would like to take a moment to acknowledge your advisor, who happens to also be in the audience. Do you want to introduce yourself? That would be great.
The one with the big smile?
The one with the big smile, and popping buttons with pride.
Yeah, I am. I'm so, so proud of all of them. They really did an amazing job presenting to you. Of course, I'm sitting there back there like, yes, they nailed that, and yes, they did that, and yes. But my name is Lauren Williams. I am an FCS teacher at the high school. This is my first year here at Celine, but it's my fifth year being an advisor for FCCLA, and I really do think that they, they are doing an amazing job, and I'm so proud to be here. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And if you are looking for speakers, I can think of seven who might be interested in dropping in, possibly, if you ask really nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. Did I just volunteer you all for something?
I mean, it didn't sound like us.
Voluntold, no. Thank you very much. Administration, oh, we have one action item this evening. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of Clark Construction to award contracts to train for the pre-purchase of train controls, equipment, and installation in the amount of $1,308,972, as submitted by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations.
So moved. Miller? Support, Stebbin?
Stebbin. So, yes, so this is a long lead time item. Well, there's two reasons why we brought it early to the board tonight. We received bids back roughly about four weeks ago. We've been doing the post-bid interviews for a lot of the contractors, but these are long-lead-time items, as well as we're looking at a 5% price increase effective February 1st. So after last week's canceled School Board meeting, I got a little nervous, which 1.3 million adds up to about $65,000. So with tonight's approval, we'll get this material on order and start getting ready for construction, hopefully to start sometime in April. And these items will be in place so we can open up the facility, the STEAM Center, which you saw all the kids, the students here tonight. Excited to build this for them, hopefully in August of 2025. Any questions for Mr. Clary?
Thank you for saving us $65,000, and I would have gladly come up for a special meeting if it was worth $65,000.
We've done it before. Also, as we wrap up the high school project with HVAC, we got our checks this week for a rebate for DTE, $187,000. So thank you to Lakoli Planters, Millennium Energy, Train, and Electromatic. So thank to those trades that are finishing up that project as well, so. That's absolutely fantastic. So all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Six, zero? Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Administration Board updates, please. We'll start with the administration.
Okay, great. I have some important highlights of our students and another opportunity I want to talk about. So we'll start with, here's an email I got from Eric Floki, who's our choir director from the middle school, and he wanted to share the success of the following five students in 7th grade, Anna Peebler, 8th grade, Megan Clauser, Gabe Dix, Aurora Goose, and Shiloh Livingston. They were selected to be part of the statewide middle school honors choir program, and only 320 students were selected out of over 800 from across the entire state. Last week, they sang in the grade 7, 8, and 9 SSA Honors Choir in Grand Rapids to start off the music, Michigan Music Conference, and he's very proud of his, of their accomplishments, and he does an excellent job as a choir director. Next, I want another, I want to point out another music accolade in Crescendo Detroit. This is an organization that the music department has been supporting for years in Detroit area, and this is from Nate Lantman. Celine Band Families. As you remember, we collected donations for Crescendo Detroit earlier this year at our fall and holiday band concerts, and he's happy to announce that due to their generosity, they were able to make a donation of about $2,000 again this year. And he just wants to thank everybody for their continued support. That helps for music, art, and dance that so many children in the city of Detroit need. And I'm just so appreciative and love this philanthropic approach from our music program, that it's not just about the kids in Celine, but it's students from around the region that don't have as many opportunities. Next, I want to talk about the Celine Area Social Services Food Drive, that Celine High School National Honor Society collected over 4,000 pounds of food, paper products, toiletries, and cleaning products on Saturday, January 20th, and that helped stock the pantry shelves at Celine Area Social Services. And NHL is led by Advisor Zach Ornilius, who's also an English teacher at the high school. Next, I want to talk about an opportunity we have that I'm very excited about, and it's the Bessie Hoffman Regional Career Exploration Center. So the proposed Bessie Hoffman Regional Career Exploration Center is located in the Lincoln School District, and will be intended to support K-12 students in Washtenaw County with CTE-like experiences. We've talked for years about the importance of expanding CTE beyond a high school down to elementary students, so that they have a better opportunity to understand what types of careers they could go into. Now, the ask for this community center is $5.5 million to renovate an existing building, Bessie Hoffman in Lincoln, and another $4.5 million to develop world-class programming for our students. Lincoln did apply for a $2.5 million community center grant, and we're waiting, and that's through the Michigan Labor and Economic Opportunity, and waiting to hear back on that one, and we'll also be looking for legislative support and corporate sponsorships to fund the center. Now, I do want to point out that this is one of the main projects that Dr. Ryan Rowe, our previous SWWC director and current Washtenaw County CTE director, is working on. The superintendents in the county have set a goal of expanding CTE focus to the eastern side of the county, where we need more programming. But we will also be able to have Celine School students going to take field trips in the center and so forth. So it's really important that we're working together collectively as a county to expand those opportunities on the east side of the county. And finally, I want to point out the Lemelson MIT Invent Team Grant Award. So we're gonna congratulate Dr. Shiri Vivek, who's an EMU educator, Celine parent, and leader of countless EMU invent teams, who have been awarded a Lemelson MIT Invent Team Grant. It's awarded to high school teams across the United States who have identified a real-world problem and will develop a technological innovation as a solution. There are eight teams across the US, and one is from Ypsilanti. The team from YPSY is focused on how to assist older community members with mobility issues. So they'll be designing and inventing a solution for that. We have two SHS students participating, Alice Jiyoung, who's 11th grader, and Suhani Dalayla, who's a 12th grader. They're on the team, and I'll be attending the mid-grant technical review at EMU on February 12th to cheer them on. So just so many great things going on with our student body.
Thank you. I'm going to invite our student representatives to report if they have anything.
Yeah, so about NHS, we also had our blood drive, our winter blood drive. Part of the blood drive committee, it was super fun, like, put it together logistically. We had such a great turnout, even with the weather and the roads, we still had so many great people show up. I got to work the drive all day and sit with people, make sure they didn't pass out, but also hear their stories, which was really cool, to hear Celine community members come back consistently to give blood, so that was really great to be a part of.
And just like Dr. Latch was saying, with the choir that went up to Grand Rapids, it's super cool for the state. And also, on the behalf of the student body, we'd like to thank Snow Day Steve for the past four snow days, and hopefully a couple more. And also, yeah, and also the polar plunge is coming up in the end of February through the connecting class, so if anyone wants to raise money or come out and jump, which I think President McFay should come, jumping the polar plunge would be amazing.
Just because I'm Canadian, doesn't mean I like the cold water.
Oh, support, yeah, support. Let me, uh...
I'd like to recommend a motion, please.
February when? 12? 28. Uh, let me just check my schedule. Oh, what time?
Oh, you can do it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's EMU Spring Break. It looks like I have time.
Perfect.
I'll pencil you in. I'll icicle you in. All right, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Did you say it's the 28th? Tran asked about it earlier, so he'll watch this back probably, so.
I told him.
Oh, there you go.
My kid said, "Tell Tran it's the 28th, and he can donate."
Excellent.
He said, "I will."
This is the point at which I say, "I'll jump if you jump."
I'll be jumping.
All right, Mateo, okay, I'll think about it. Thank you. Any more to report? Student reps? I'm starting to rethink whether we should have had you. No, we're delighted that you're here. Anyone at the table? No, we're delighted that you're here. Uh, anyone at the table wish to say anything, please? Go ahead, Brad.
So, um, before we get started, I, I really want to make sure that I, tonight, I have enjoyed the heck out of this meeting. Like, just the, like, for me, how much celebration and how much it's been about, like, students and how much, like, just we're doing really neat things in the school district and seeing kids and their advisors and their parents and, like, and hear about their, anyway, so it kind of leads into what I want to say. So I've got a couple of things that I, I do want to go over and I will try to be efficient. So, um, number one, through the lens of finance, um, the team should know as well as in transparency with our, our community and what have you, that we are activating, um, the compensation committee. Um, we have some guidance regarding N A S I and we just want to make sure that everything is compliant and all of that. So, um, it's with regards to just making sure we're buttoned up, uh, with Steve's contract or Dr. Latch's contract. And so, uh, we're just going through the, the meeting process. We may have something that comes out of it, we may have not. We might recommend changes, but just right now, what I'm saying is, like, there's a process and we're going through it, so. So that's that. Number two, um, this one's a little more lengthy, I, I'll admit. So, you know, tonight, right, we recognized the robotics team. This past weekend, Principal Steger, um, was recognizing uh, the all-state band and choir and orchestra. And so I will tell you that I've had this on my mind for a little bit and we've just had stuff on our agenda that I didn't push this or want to talk about or ask this question sooner. And it's this. Uh, we have high-level programs here in sports, clubs, activities, et cetera. I'm wondering about letters. So we have a letter process, I, I assume, for, for how to obtain a letter in the school district. And, um, one of the things that, you know, when kids put them on their jackets and they put the things they're proud of on the back and, and so one of the things that, um, I am seeking clarification for, and I want to, and that's really how I want to word this, um, is I just want to seek clarification regarding that process and have we revisited it recently? Have we discussed it? Because, um, I will admit that this got on my radar because of a friend of mine and, and we were having discussion about women's hockey, okay? And, and I will own that I, you know, like the idea of those student athletes being recognized. And then I, it, it became more for me when I started thinking about the choir. I started thinking about, um, the gaming team that came to visit us and debate. And so I guess I've kind of landed on the thought of this and I, I'll give you like this, I guess it's my, just my general opinion is that if a kid's representing the Celine community and doing it the absolute highest level that a kid can compete at, then I guess this trustee, I mean, I can only speak for myself, I would want to encourage that kid. And if a kid wants to put it on the back of a jacket, if we want to recognize that, it doesn't, I don't know if it's a letter, I don't know if it's a, but I'd like to know, have we gone through the process recently of just talking about it? And, um, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to just recognize more of our students for the things that they do. So, uh, anyway, so that was on my, my mind and what have you. I, I want to make it clear. I want to protect the integrity of a letter, right? A letter means something special. It means you have met the highest standard, the varsity, you know, of, 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 of competition, okay? But I think about our robotics, I think about debate, I think about all those things. So enough said. All right, so in conclusion, I guess what I'm asking for is I'm asking for any information that I just don't know. And if there was appetite for a committee or is part of the handbook in athletic review processes or whatever our leadership team says is appropriate, you know, then I guess I'm asking for due consideration on it. And then the third thing is, um, I want to state my appreciation for the, for the foundation, right? Like, they came and visited us tonight. I think that the event that they are providing this Thursday is a tremendous opportunity for our community to have an event with a really, really talented doctor, right? You know, Dr. Lithcott Haynes, you know, I, I think I read, like, she's associated with Stanford, like, so like, you know, what, what do people say? Like, it's the Harvard of the West, you know, like, that's a, that to me is a, she's a, obviously a really, she's an expert at what she does and I think it's a tremendous opportunity. And I thank the foundation for engaging with students, engaging with classrooms, engaging with teachers, and now they're engaging with parents and families. And so I, I just admire that and I wanted them to hear that, so. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, Jenny Miller?
I, um, I'll build off of Brad's words about the foundation, so I, I wanted to thank Stacy for coming tonight. And, um, I was thinking about this, this weekend because sadly, um, our Lions are not going to, to the Super Bowl. But there's hope because of the year and the building that they've done over the last few years for future years. But if we can cheer for the Lions at the Super Bowl, I would like to recognize a Celine alumni who will be at the Super Bowl. And, um, in, in looking at the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, uh, I think it would be appropriate, if you play in the Super Bowl, perhaps you could be considered for the, uh, Foundation for Celine Area Schools Hall of Fame. So, um, Tabor Pepper, a Celine alum who also, uh, went to, um, Michigan State and had a successful career there, has been in the NFL for a while. And he is currently the long snapper for the San Francisco 49ers, and you may have seen him, um, holding, uh, catching the ball and holding it for Jake Moody, also Michigan alum and, uh, local, kind of local-ish, not Celine, but close by kiddo. So, um, anyways, I guess they're men now. I don't know, they're not kids. But anyways, Tabor, Tabor, um, has been, um, been wonderful to our community. When he graduated from Michigan State, he came back and he visited my, yeah, I think, I think maybe that was my class. He read, he read to our class and, uh, read to my class, read to countless other classes. And, um, just a really wonderful family and a really wonderful, wonderful guy. So if I can't cheer for the Lions at the Super Bowl, I'm going to cheer for Tabor. And, um, I'm going to talk to Stacy about a potential candidate for our Hall of Fame because, I mean, the Super Bowl doesn't get much bigger than that in his field, so. Um, so 48 on the 49ers, let's go. Uh, I also was going to mention the polar plunge. Um, this is a really important effort at the high school and I appreciate Mateo and his classmates. Um, my twins are going to be jumping. Um, Laney is one of the organizers this year. And, uh, I, I just want to highlight a couple of things that Celine Area Schools is renowned across the state for their work with the polar plunge. The polar plunge raises money to support Special Olympics in our area and across the state. And Celine, for the last several years, has been the highest fundraising, um, community in the state. And these kids would like to be the highest again this year. So if you are looking to donate, the kids that are in the connecting club that have volunteered to jump each have a fundraising page. So reach out to someone that you know at the high school or a high school student and they will connect you with someone who is planning to jump. Um, and they are jumping on February 28th, but they are working right now to, uh, to fundraise. And I heard, uh, I heard Nick Luther, I'll give a shout out to Nick Luther, I heard he's in the lead for fundraising. So if you know Nick, he's a senior this year too, so. I also want to say, uh, uh, that the next athletic signing day is, is, uh, coming up on February 8th. So, uh, there'll be kids signing their letters of intent for, um, future careers in college and athletics. Um, and so if you have time available, I think they're starting at 3:00, so come and support these athletes um, as they make these commitments. Um, oh, I know, I was going to say one other thing about the kids who are in the polar plunge. Um, I'm not sure, I think, Mateo, you're involved in this too tomorrow? Are you involved in the, yeah? So tomorrow, the connecting kids, um, who are upperclassmen are presenting to the freshmen during hornet time, so during advisory. And I know Laney and Drew are a part of that and I thought Mateo was too. So they are going to be, um, doing, um, a presentation, kind of an interactive, uh, um, activity for the freshman class and talking about inclusivity and what that means and how they can be more inclusive of their, um, schoolmates and classmates. So I just want to highlight the connecting club and the work that they do. It's a class, but it's also a club. And so if, um, if you know somebody who is looking for a place to land at the high school, it's definitely a, a wonderful club or, and class. Um, and lastly, I wanted to, to just quickly say that, um, after Michigan won the national championship, I went to school and it was a cold day and I was wearing a hat and it was a hat from my daughter's college, Wittenberg. And, um, for those of you who don't know, I teach in Ann Arbor, so I was outside and I had a white hat with a, uh, red W on it. And this little kindergartner was staring at me, staring at me, staring at me. And he came over and he said, "I thought that you cheered for Michigan." And I said, "I do." And I, like, had my Michigan shirt on, I unzipped, I said, "I do, go blue, like, so exciting, right?" And he was like, "What is that?" So my, my hornet hat will fit in better this, when I'm outside on the playground with the kindergarteners. So thank you for my hats that I got tonight. I will definitely use them. I am, um, outside with the kindergartners and first graders every day, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I just have a few things and then we'll move all the way down. First of all, uh, to Treasurer Gerby, it's the polar plunge, not polar push. Just want to be sure. Now. If some, but now, here's the thing, I did not rate, I had forgotten, thank you, I know you'd push me. I had forgotten, ha ha, that, uh, it was in, it, it's supporting Special Olympics. And I've been a Special Olympic supporter since, uh, since I was in high school. Seriously, that's a long time ago. Do the math. Uh, two other things, uh, February 2nd, I'm taking a CBA 263 on collecting feedback. It's a new course. And on February 7th, I'm going to be, once again, a judge at the Future Farmers of America, uh, event that's going on. There's a lot of activities and I've been, I've been, David Miller said I've been upgraded or graduated from, um, I'm up to Green Horn now or something like that. I know, I know, it's very exciting. So working our way down the table. Thank you for your time.
Um, so quickly, wow, um, I think we all felt the same thing. I'm, like, still smiling from all the kids and the, the supporting staff and parents and coaches. So just super impressed, continue to be super impressed with all of our students every day. So thank you to all of them who joined us tonight. Thank you to the teams who, who did these goodie bags for, um, School Board Appreciation Month. That's really, really nice. And, um, I, I know it's probably all of our pleasure to serve the district. Um, I wanted to mention one event. There are a lot of great events that were mentioned, but, um, one that wasn't, uh, mentioned, I wanted to thank our music program for bringing the St. Olaf Band to the high school on Friday. I'm married to a grad, so he's super excited about that. So I'll be at the high school, um, for quite a while actually on Friday night. So come on up if you're interested in some really good music. Um, and lastly, I wanted to say thank you to Brad, to Tim, to Steve, to Miranda, and to former trustee Dennis Valente. Um, I spent five years on the Finance Committee and I think the teamwork, respect, and collaboration was one of my, it'll become one of my favorite memories of, of the time I served on the board. So Miranda's not here, Tim's not here, and, uh, I hope Dennis isn't watching because I hope he has something else to do on a Tuesday night. But, so I'm going to look at you, Brad, and I'm going to look at you, Steve. Thank you very much. It's, it's important work and, um, I really enjoyed my time, so thank you.
Um, so last Friday, uh, my former high school hosted a cheer alumni. I'm, I joined over 40 former and current cheerleaders during their basketball game and got to perform. Um, I was a little rusty after returning, uh, to cheer after 26 years. But I had an absolutely wonderful time. Go Chargers! And, um, so connecting with former students is valuable. Um, it creates a sense of belonging, um, even after many, many years. So I'm interested in all the ways that we are fostering that here in Celine. So, um, I know we have some things here and there, but, um, you know, it, it was just really, uh, I guess a magical moment. And, um, yeah, it, it was good. Um, I'm not done yet, sorry. Um, so I have a brief DEI Advisory Committee update. They met last Wednesday. Uh, we welcomed Ryan Kerr, uh, DEI Specialist and Instructional Coach who, um, was here at the beginning of the night. The DEI, oh, so we're excited that he will be providing support for our educators and lead the district in best practices around DEI. The DEI AC is scheduled to be on a future agenda, I believe March possibly, to provide an update and to make recommendations to the board so that we can further ensure the implementation of DEI in the district. Tonight was the, oh, at 5:30, the, uh, Sex Ed Advisory Board Meeting, which, you know, because we had to push, uh, this meeting back, um, there was an overlap between the meeting. And I appreciate that, um, Cameron Cochran came, uh, to present because he's the chair and I think missed the majority of the meeting. So, um, I will touch base with the other chair and, uh, provide a update, um, as needed. So I wanted to, uh, so I'm, I'm going to continue to serve on the DEI Advisory Committee and the Sex Ed Advisory Board. Sadly, after requesting to continue my service on the Policy Committee, I was not appointed to the committee this year, nor will I be serving on any of the board's standing committees. While I'm disappointed, I'm not surprised at the political nature of, um, decisions. I proudly served on the Policy Committee for five years and I've been, since I've been on the board. And I've served as Polit- Policy Chair for two of those years. In addition, for the last three years, I served on the Resolutions and Bylaws Committee for the Michigan Association of School Boards at a state level. It is a loss to Celine Area Schools to not have my level of expertise represented on the Policy Committee this year. For those who have shared with me that they felt they finally had someone to represent their voice on the committee these past few years, this decision will not change my commitment to advocating for children, especially those who continue to be marginalized in this school district. I'll continue to draft and propose equitable policies and voice my concerns when harmful and targeted policies come to this board table.
If I could just say, since I was the one who made those appointments, I expect nothing less, Susan. And so I appreciate that you're going to continue. When I didn't serve last year on the Policy Committee, I was able to offer some recommended policies as well. So I'm fully hoping and expecting that you will contribute as well. And you are still on the S A B, correct? Just wanted to clarify that. And the DEI AC, both very.
Yes, I just said that.
I understood, thank you. Both very important roles and that's why I wanted to ensure that you were there as well. Thank you.
I'd like to thank, um, the administration and the Foundation for the Gifts and the recognition as well as the superintendent, um, and the pleasure to work for and with our students, uh, and educators. I am, I share, uh, Brad Gerby's, uh, joy at watching all of our students tonight and families. I am making my way through How to Raise an Adult. Uh, I already have sort of raised one, so maybe I should have read it a few years ago, but I think he, he turned out well. Um, it's, uh, it's really good and, um, I think is, will be really a great night for the community. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it from clinic, but, um, I'm hoping to at the very least watch the video of the discussion. And, um, so I echo thanking the foundation for bringing them. I didn't hear anyone mention, uh, kindergarten roundup. So it's, it's not just yet, but, uh, March 6th, but just a little plug for Celine Area Schools. There's a house for sale in my neighborhood. And we, uh, welcome all of our youngest learners into the district, so. I loved kindergarten roundup as a parent. It was always, it was just as exciting three times. Uh, so anyways, I think that will be a, a fun and rewarding night for the district when we welcome our newest little learners. So I'll mention that because most of the other things that I was going to say were mentioned already. And thanks, everyone.
Will, take that under advisement. Thank you so much. The Consent Agenda is listed in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Consent Agenda as printed.
Ross and Gerby?
Gerby?
Looking for a second? Second, Lauren Gold, thank you very much. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, six zero. Thank you so much. Item scheduled in the next agenda, Superintendent Latch?
Yeah, we'll have a scheduled report, a very important scheduled report with a safety and. Yeah, we'll have a scheduled report, a very important scheduled report with a safety and security update, which is going to be led by Rex Clary, Jackie Martin, and Jay Grossman.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, public comment? I don't believe there is any sec- public comment. So our next meeting will be held on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of January thirtieth at five, seven fifty-seven, almost seven fifty-eight.
Motion, Miller?
Miller?
Support, Steben.
Steben, thank you so much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Six oh, I believe it is. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Sick, uh, all, uh, great. So um, we are adjourned.